Board will now come to order. Madam Clerk, please call the row.
Alderwoman Tyus. Alderwoman Middlebrook.
Present.
Alderman Bosley. Alderwoman Evans.
Present.
Alderman Page.
Present.
Alderwoman Gracia. Alderman Calder.
Here.
Alderwoman Rice.
Present.
Alderman Gunther.
Here.
Alderman Ballmer.
Present.
Alderwoman Morden. Alderman Stevens.
Here.
Alderwoman Schweitzer.
Present.
Alderwoman Howard.
Present.
Alderwoman Green.
Present.
Alderman Odenberg. Alderwoman Peel.
Present.
Alderman Todd.
Present.
Alderwoman Davis. Alderwoman Spencer. Alderman Collins Mohammed. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Vaquaro.
Present.
Alderman Ryan.
Here.
Alderman Con. Alderwoman Clark Hubbard.
Here.
Alderwoman Boyd. Alderwoman Navarro. President Reed.
Here.
Alderwoman Tyus.
Present.
Alderman Bosley. Alderwoman Gracia. Alderwoman Morden. Alderman Odenberg. Alderwoman Davis. Alderwoman Spencer.
Uh, thank you. Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you.
Alderman Mohammed.
All right, here, here.
So we are at.
Alderman Boyd. Alderman Con. Alderwoman Boyd. Alderwoman Navarro. Nineteen present.
For being present, um, I don't know if the pastor is with us today. For being present, we begin today with prayer. Giving all honor to God, Almighty God, source of all authority, we humbly ask guidance in our deliberations and wisdom in our conclusions. Amen. We dispense with line item three, introduction of honored guests. Any introduction of honored guests, all of them from the twenty-third. As always, I'd like to have my good friend Greg Meyer as my special guest. I know he's listening and I would ask to do that in bank, but I don't think we do that that way. But I always tease. All right, so Greg Myers, welcome to the board. Sure this is your first attendance. Any, any further introductions, any further introductions? Uh, before we go to the aldermen from the tenth, we'll come back to this line item because I was just notified that Alderman from the sixth, you have a special presentation and are all you people here now and ready to go?
Yes, we're ready.
All right, so. All from nineteenth, you recognize on motion for the courtesy resolutions calendar. Alderman from the tenth, you recognize on the motion for the courtesy resolutions calendar.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I move that we adopt the courtesy resolutions calendar.
The move by Alderman from tenth, I maintain second on that. Second, I bid all of them from the ninth and a couple others. Uh, Alderman from the sixth, you recognized on those resolution number sixty.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just wanted to pause for a moment before we start the meeting to send our thanks to Stephen Acre. Many of you have worked with him and his capacity at RH CDA, which is now Rise Community Development. Um, he has undertaken an impressive amount of affordable housing, where three hundred million dollars in residential development, twelve hundred units of affordable housing in the city of St. Louis, um, and all over, including East St. Louis and Ferguson as well. He has received awards too numerous to mention. It took up over an entire paragraph on his resolution. And, um, Rise has also undertaken neighborhood planning efforts in the Graboy-Jefferson corridor, um, the Ferguson Comprehensive Plan and, um, the Wynn Stanley Neighborhood Plan in East St. Louis. Um, he has also played an integral role in the Missouri Workforce Housing Association, which was started in two thousand and nine. Um, it's a statewide affordable housing professional organization and advocacy group um, that helped restore the Missouri low-income housing tax credits here in the state of Missouri. Um, he has also served as a mentor and helped launch the careers of many of our community development professionals here in the St. Louis region. Um, and is a lifelong resident of the city of St. Louis, has lived in Lafayette Square for nearly forty years. Started out without hot water in that home. He was restoring windows in exchange for rent. Um, Stephen is also an adventure traveler and one of his things, favorite things to do is to jump from high places. Once made an eight hundred and twenty-nine foot jump from the top of the stratosphere in Las Vegas. So I just wanted to pause today, um, to let any alderman, um, who would like to say some words of thanks for Stephen's incredible career and, um, let him say a few words if he is interested in doing that as well.
Thank you, Alderwoman. Uh, I'll open up for any discussion, any questions or comments? Discussion. Well, I'll start it off. Alderman from the twenty-fifth.
Thank, thank you, Mr. President. Um, this is definitely a kind of bittersweet resolution. Um, it's one of those moments where, uh, you have someone who's very active in the community, who's done so many wonderful things, uh, who's taking another, uh, journey, uh, in their life and, uh, well, we'll miss them in their previous capacity. Um, you know, very excited about their new, their new journey, their new chapter. Um, I have to say, uh, thank you to, uh, Stephen. Uh, he has been a wonderful partner for projects in the twenty-fifth ward. Um, I think one in particular that comes to mind, although there's several, um, but one in particular that comes to mind are the apartments along South Spring Avenue. Um, they were, at the time I was elected, twelve years ago, um, just, uh, I used to joke that it was a Sodom and Gomorrah of my neighborhood. Um, it was about, uh, I think twenty-four, twenty-five buildings that were all vacant, um, about a hundred units at the time. Um, right behind a high school and, uh, just all sorts of activity, as all of us know, when there's a huge amount of vacancy that, uh, all sorts of illicit activity takes place in those vacant buildings. Um, but it was an entire block, uh, the entire forty-seven-hundred block of South Spring was vacant, derelict, uh, and just in really awful condition. Um, the buildings to the north of it on the forty-six-hundred block of Spring were also vacant at the time, so it was basically um, an entire section of my ward that just looked, uh, yeah, nightmarish. Um, I think at the time, we also had like two thousand calls for police service in a year, uh, to those blocks, just because of the, you know, numerous activities that were taking place there. Um, but I had worked to get a grant from the Department of Economic Development of the state of Missouri and I couldn't find anyone, literally any developer that would take on this project. And I showed up at Steve's, Stephen's house on my hands and knees and I literally begged him, uh, and Rise, RH CDA at the time, to please help me and my neighbors uh, with this project and I told him about the, you know, a few million dollars that we were getting from the DED and talked about, you know, various other, um, you know, commitments that we thought we might be able to make happen and he said, let me think about it. Um, but over the course of probably about three years, uh, or maybe longer, uh, we were able to get that project done. Um, it was a project of love for me, but I know it was a project that he and, uh, the organization were very committed to and it has made a world of difference, uh, in my neighborhood and so, um, but it, again, it's just one out of many. Uh, I think at the time, we also had another nonprofit developer that had gone bankrupt. Uh, went into foreclosure, a lot of their properties went into foreclosure, RH CDA kind of interceded and helped with that. Um, but time and time again, with community planning processes, partnering with our CDC, um, you know, the partnership has been just a tremendous asset to Dutch Town and other neighborhoods throughout the city. Um, and Stephen, your efforts, you know, championing those, um, will forever, you know, be cherished, uh, from, from my perspective, so, um, I can't thank you enough. I think we've, uh, you know, formed a wonderful friendship over the years and, um, while I'm sad to see you leave Rise, uh, I'm very excited for you to be able to, you know, have this new chapter in your life as well.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman from the ninth.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I just wanted to say a quick thank you as well to Stephen. Uh, I truly appreciate the leadership that you provided for the Jefferson Graboy Neighborhood Planning Initiative. Uh, I know that was almost three years of, um, getting neighbors together to develop a plan, uh, as to bringing about equitable development into the, uh, parts of the.
We, uh, we lost you, Alderman. We lost you. Uh, we can see your mouth move, but we're not getting any, we'll, we'll come back to you. Alderman from the twenty-second.
Yes, thank you. Good morning, uh, Mr. President, members of the board. I certainly like to say thank you to Stephen. Um, I met Stephen back in the late nineties when it was RH CDA and I was a brand new executive director, pretty much of a uh, local community development corporation and just enthusiastic and excited about bringing new development to the twenty-second ward and the Hamilton Heights neighborhood at the time. And I applied for a capacity building grant because that's what we needed in that organization to really get to the next level. And, um, I remember as I was putting the application together, it was toward, it was getting close to five o'clock and it was around three or so and I'm making the five copies that's necessary and the copy machine jammed. And I had papers in my hand and they literally flew out all over the office and I called Stephen, I was like, Stephen, I don't know if I could make it, um, by five o'clock. I'm struggling, I'm, yeah, the papers just flew everywhere and he said, get it done, get here. And, um, fortunately I made it there on time and, um, we got awarded the grant and it's been a great experience. I considered Stephen, along with Barbara Geitzman, I met her around the same time, as mentors of mine in this, uh, community development space. Uh, he's reached with a lot of knowledge, uh, always willing to give free advice and, uh, I appreciate all the service that you have done to our, uh, for our region, Stephen. Even though we didn't get a chance to partner in the twenty-second ward, you know, for brick and mortar, but we have partnered when it came to capacity building and, you know, giving good advice to the neighborhood organizations to kind of, you know, help them out to move, uh, to the next level. So again, uh, thank you for all your service to St. Louis and have a happy retirement.
Thank, thank you, Alderman. Uh, Alderwoman from the seventeenth.
Thank you, President Reed and, uh, members of board. Uh, yeah, hi Stephen. Um, this is, uh, wonderful to honor you, uh, in you going to retirement. I've worked with, um, Stephen, uh, back in about twenty-twelve with the, um, start of the Spanish Lake CDC. And, uh, I and another person, um, began the Spanish Lake CDC from scratch and, uh, Rise came in to help with some technical assistance in the first year that I was executive director of the organization and it was phenomenal. And the Spanish Lake CDC is still going on up there, um, doing affordable housing. And now, um, I am fortunate enough to continue to work with Rise regarding the light tech, uh, in the seventeenth ward. You have created, um, a phenomenal organization and, um, the successor and how you've been able to have successors in this is, is great and, uh, again, congratulations.
Right, uh. Alderman from the twenty-second, your hand is still up. I don't know if you still had something. Any, any further discussion, any further discussion? Or comments? Mr. President, I, uh, I have some work going on here in my home, so I have a little bit of trouble with noise in the background, but I, I do want to, uh, deeply thank all of you. Um, I'm, you know, very touched and, uh, take to heart all the kind words that have been said and I've appreciated working with all of you over the years and what has been really a joy to me in the work that I've been able to do in the city, so thank you all so much. Right, thank you, Stephen, and I also just want to tell you, thank you for all the work that you did with me when I was alderman of the sixth ward. Uh, and I think the, um, the comments from Alderman from the twenty-second captured a lot of it. For those of you who, uh, who don't know Stephen and haven't got an opportunity to meet, meet Stephen, uh, you know, when it's time to get it done, Stephen can be very direct and, and help to get you over, over the hump. Uh, you know, and if you're, if you're, uh, confused about something, he will, uh, he can really begin to, uh, you know, paint the picture for you so that, uh, so that you understand the full implications of everything. So he did a, just, we did all sorts of work when I came in the office in the sixth ward and, uh, you know, I had an opportunity to be his alderman at the time. And, um, you know, he just, uh, you know, I learned a lot from Stephen. Uh, you know, I was disappointed when he took this current role because we worked closely together before, but now I'm just so happy that you have done that because the work that you did since getting there has just been phenomenal. And, um, you know, you, congratulations on your retirement. All the ones from the eighth.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. Uh, with all of this gratitude, I would like to move that we embank this resolution.
The move. The move by Alderman from the eighth, second by Alderman from the nineteenth and Alderman from the twenty-fifth that we, uh, adopt this resolution and bank in discussion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Pose. Motion carries. Madam Clerk, please, uh, make note of that, uh, create another copy of the resolution and bank. And if any other alderman has any adjustments to that, you can notify the clerk. Any, anything further on that? Alderman from the six, you recognize the pose on this.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, Stephen, congratulations on your retirement. As the alderman from the twenty-fifth mentioned, it'd be, uh, it's very bittersweet, but you have also, um, done the work that needed to be done to make sure that there are well-qualified, caring, compassionate folks to follow in your footsteps and best of luck on all of your new adventures.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded that we adopt our courtesy resolutions, resolutions calendar. All, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carries. With that, we'll return our regular order of business. Uh, and then introduction of honored guests. Any further introductions of honored guests? Alderman from the tenth, like to wrap this up.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. We're gathered here on July ninth, which is National Sugar Cookie Day. Also, this is Tom Hanks' birthday. More importantly, on this day in nineteen fifty-six, Dick Clark made his first American Bandstand show and, uh, the Spotlight Dance featured the Alderman from the twenty-third that day. Thank you.
Right. The Alderman from twenty-third is quite the dancer. Uh, approval of the minutes.
Approval of the minutes dated Thursday, July first, twenty twenty-one.
Alderman from the tenth, you recognize on approval of the minutes.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I move we approve the minutes from July first, twenty twenty-one.
Second.
Move by Alderman from tenth, second by Alderman from twenty-fifth, any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries. Report of city officials.
Report of city officials can be found in A, B, and C of the agenda and has been placed in the alderman's mailboxes. Dear members of the board, according to the development agreement in section two point one four, authorized by ordinance six, seven, four, one, one, I have the pleasure to submit the following individual for appointment to the Ballpark Village CID. The appointment of Mr. Neil Richardson, my designated, who resides in the tenth ward, whose time will expire September twentieth, twenty twenty-three, replacing Otis Williams. I respectfully request your approval of the appointment, sincerely, Tashara O. Jones, Mayor.
Alderman from the seventh, you recognize on mayor's appointments to Ballpark Village Community Improvement District.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I move to approve the mayor's appointment to the Ballpark Village CID.
Second.
The move by Alderman from the seventh, second by Alderman from twenty-fifth, any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Pose. Motion carries.
Dear members of the board, I have the pleasure, the pleasure to submit the following individual for reappointment to the Regional Convention and Sports Complex Authority. The reappointment of Mister, Mister Earl Nance Junior, who resides in the twenty-sixth ward. I respectfully request your approval of the appointment, sincerely, Tashara O. Jones, Mayor.
All the ones from the twenty-sixth, you may recognize on the mayor's appointment to the Regional Convention and Sports Complex Authority.
Commission of Sports Complex Authority.
The move by Alderman from the twenty-sixth, entertain second on that motion.
Second.
Second, uh, by Alderman from the fourth, any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Pose. Motion carries. Dispense with line item seven. Would anyone like to take any bills off of any of our informal calendars? Anyone like to take any bills off of any of our informal calendars? We will dispense with line items eight through ten. First reading of board bills.
Board Bill eighty-one, sponsored by Alderman Todd and ordinance authorizing the honorary street name Michael P. McMillan Way pursuant to ordinance six, eight, nine, three, seven, which shall begin at the intersection of Auburn Avenue and Page Boulevard and run north on our Auburn Avenue to the intersection of Auburn and Dr. Martin Luther King Drive. Board Bill two, sponsored by, I'm sorry, Board Bill eighty-two, sponsored by President Reed and ordinance recommended by the Board of Estment and Apportionment, authorizing the mayor or her designated to apply for and accept funds pursuant to federal appropriations under American Rescue Plan Act twenty twenty-one, dated March eleventh, twenty twenty-one, directing the comptroller to establish a new account for the receipt of funds to the extent received appropriating certain expenditures of such funds to the extent received authorizing contracts and intergovernmental agreements and to expand the funds to the extent received containing severability clause and containing emergency clause. That is the extent of first reading of board bill.
Reference to committee.
To the Streets Committee, Board Bill eighty-one, to the Hoods Committee, Board Bill eighty-two. That is the extent of reference to committee.
Second reading.
The following board bills were reported out of Transportation and Commerce Committee with a due pass recommendation. Board Bill eleven, sponsored by Alderman Calder and ordinance recommend, and ordinance amended ordinance six, six, nine, three, five, which ordinance relates to an original lease agreement dated January the first, twenty, two thousand and six, as extended in twenty-ten and twenty-fifteen between the city of St. Louis, Missouri and a material sales company containing severability clause. Board Bill fifteen, sponsored by Alderwoman Middlebrook and ordinance authorizing the execution of a new lease agreement between the city of St. Louis, Missouri and Centerpoint Terminal Company for a period of ten years with three, five-year mutual containing severability clause. Board Bill sixteen, sponsored by Alderwoman Middlebrook and ordinance amended ordinance number six, eight, eight, seven, two, which ordinance relates to original lease agreement dated April first, twenty eleven, to be extended in the first mutual option between the city of St. Louis, Missouri and Kiesel Company of Missouri Corporation containing severability clause. Board Bill seventeen, sponsored by Alderwoman Middlebrook and ordinance authorizing the execution of a new lease agreement between the city of St. Louis, Missouri and Terminal Row Association of St. Louis, Missouri Corporation containing a severability clause. Board Bill eighteen, sponsored by Alderwoman Middlebrook and Alderman Page and ordinance authorizing the execution of a new lease agreement between the city of St. Louis, Missouri and Grossman Iron and Steel Company for a certain land at or near twenty-one through ninety-nine and fourteen North Market at twenty-two, twenty-six North First Street in the city for a period of ten years with three, five-year mutual options containing severability clause. Board Bill twenty-one, sponsored by Alderman Page and ordinance authorizing the execution of a new lease agreement between the city of St. Louis, Missouri and St. Louis Produce Market, a Missouri corporation for certain land consisting of forty-five thousand, seven hundred and nine square feet at or near twenty-nine, zero, one Hall Street in the city, in the city for a period of ten years with three, five-year mutual options for the purposes of vehicle and trucks of Lisi or Lisi's customers and annual base rent of eleven thousand, four hundred and twenty-seven dollars and forty, with a two percent annual escalator for the first ten years and containing severability clause. Board Bill forty-four, sponsored by Alderwoman Middlebrook and ordinance amended ordinance number six, eight, six, eight, one, which ordinance relates to original lease agreement dated July twentieth, twenty-ten, to be extended in the third mutual option between the city of St. Louis, Missouri and ACBL Transportation Services LLC authorizing the execution of a third amendment to lease agreement between the city and Lisi under certain terms and conditions attached heretofore as exhibit A and containing severability clause. Board Bill forty-five, sponsored by Alderman Con and ordinance recommended and approved by the Board of Estment and Apportionment, authorizing the director authorizing and directing the director of airports and the comptroller of city of St. Louis to enter into and execute on behalf of the city the St. Louis Lambert International Airport Lease Agreement, number AL two, one, seven, between the city and Southwest Airlines Company. Its terms are more fully described in section one of this ordinance containing the severability clause and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill forty-seven, sponsored by Alderman Calder and ordinance amending ordinance number six, eight, six, I'm sorry, six, eight, nine, six, four, which ordinance relates to an original lease agreement dated September fifteenth, twenty-eleven between the city of St. Louis of Municipal Corporation and Fred Weber, Inc., a Delaware corporation, authorizing the execution of a First Amendment to lease agreement between the city and New Frontier Materials Operation Alpha LLC as attached heretofore as exhibit A and containing severability clause. Board Bill forty-eight, sponsored by Alderman Calder and ordinance amending ordinance number six, seven, two, nine, eight, which ordinance relates to original lease agreement dated January the first, two thousand and seven and extended in two thousand and sixteen between the city of St. Louis, a municipal corporation and Fred Weber, Inc., authorizing the execution of a First Amendment to lease agreement between the city and New Frontier Materials Operation Alpha LLC as attached heretofore as exhibit A and containing severability clause. The following board bills were reported out of Hoods Committee with a due pass recommendation. Board Bill two, committee sub as amended, sponsored by President Reed and ordinance recommended by the Board of Estment and Apportionment, authorizing the mayor or her designated to apply for and accept funds pursuant to federal appropriations under the American Rescue Plan Act twenty twenty-one, dated March eleventh, twenty twenty-one, containing an emergency clause. Board Bill seventy-one, sponsored by Alderwoman Peel and ordinance recommended by the Tax Increment Financing Commission of the city of St. Louis approving the city foundry, St. Louis Tax Increment Financing, Second Amendment, RPA two redevelopment plan and the revision to the redevelopment project for redevelopment project area to describe therein making finance with respect thereto and containing severability clause. Board Bill seventy-two, sponsored by Alderwoman Peel and ordinance recommended by the Board of Estment and Apportionment authorizing the execution of amended and restated redevelopment agreement between the city of St. Louis, Missouri and Fapa Partners LLC and financing agreement between the city of St. Louis, Missouri and the Industrial Development Authority of the city of St. Louis, Missouri prescribing the form and details of said agreements, authorizing other related actions in connection with such agreements and containing severability clause. Board Bill seventy-three, sponsored by Alderwoman Peel and ordinance recommended by the Board of Estment and Apportionment, authorizing the city of St. Louis, Missouri to issue its taxable industrial development revenue bond. to issue its taxable industrial development revenue bond series two thousand and twenty-one in a principal amount of not to exceed a hundred and twenty-five million dollars, authorizing and directing the taking of other actions and approval and execution of other documents as are necessary or desirable to carry out, comply with the intent thereof. The following board bill was reported out of public safety with a due pass recommendation. Board Bill sixty, sixty-one sponsored by Alderman Oldenbo, Oldenburg and ordinance to make it unlawful for an individual to lift the door handles or otherwise try the door and locks of successive vehicles to gain entry to the vehicles unless the individual is the owner of the vehicles or has the owner's permission to enter the vehicle. The following board bills were reported out of Streets Committee with a due pass recommendation. Board Bill fifty-seven sponsored by Alderman Calder and ordinance recommended by the Board of Public Service to conditionally vacate above surface, surface and subsurface rights for vehicle equestrian and pedestrian travel in Ninth Street between Cold Street and Dr. Martin Luther King Drive in the City of St. Louis, Missouri as herein after describing accordance with Charter Authority and in conformity with, conformity with section one four of Article twenty-one of the Charter and imposing certain conditions on such vacation. Board Bill sixty-six sponsored by Alderwoman Davis and ordinance recommended by the Board of Public Service to conditionally vacate above surface, surface and subsurface rights for vehicle equestrian and pedestrian travel beginning at Ninth Street and continuing westwardly to its terminus and bounded by Olive Street, Ninth Street, Pine Street and Twentieth Street in the City of St. Louis, Missouri as herein after describing accordance with Charter Authority and in conformity with section one four of Article twenty-one of the Charter and imposing certain conditions on such vacation. Board Bill seventy-four sponsored by Alderwoman Tyus and ordinance directing the Director of Streets to permanently close barricade or otherwise impede the floor traffic at Lexington at the Eastern Curb Line of Kings Highway, Memorial Boulevard and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill seventy-five sponsored by Alderwoman Tyus and ordinance repealing ordinance number six eight four five five authorizing the Director of Streets to op, to open the permanently closed San Francisco Avenue three eight seven, I'm sorry, three hundred and eighty-seven feet east of the Eastern Curb Line at Kings Highway, Memorial Boulevard and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill seventy-six Committee sub sponsored by Alderwoman Tyus and ordinance directing the Director of Streets to permanently close barricade or otherwise impede the floor traffic at Ashland at the Western Curb Line of Marcus and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill eighty sponsored by Alderwoman Tyus and ordinance directing the Director of Streets to permanently close barricade or otherwise impede the floor traffic at Greer Avenue three hundred and seventy-five feet east of the East Curb Line of Union Boulevard and containing an emergency clause. That is the extent of second reading report of standing committees.
Okay, um. All the ones from the first.
Mr. President, members of the board, I, I move to, uh, suspend the rules, uh, so that I can move down Board Bill seventy-four, seventy-five, seventy-six, Committee Substitute and eighty to the perfection consent calendar. I did notify the clerk.
Okay, give me the list again. I know I saw, I saw the email earlier, but give me the.
Um, seventy-four.
Seventy-four.
Seventy-five.
Seventy-five.
Seventy-six Committee Substitute.
Seventy-six Committee Substitute.
And eighty.
Eighty.
And I actually would like to add that seventy-six Committee Substitute is also with Alderman Bosley, so.
It's also, um.
There are some, some of his streets in bu, in that, uh, board bill.
Okay. Uh, Alderman from the seventh.
Uh, I guess point of order would, I was wondering if I could maybe tack a bill on to the, uh, the Alderman from the first motion.
Oh, yes, yes. Yes, which one?
Board Bill fifty-seven, if she'd be, uh, would be willing to add that to her motion.
Board Bill number fifty-seven.
Mister Clerk, I mean Mister, Mister President.
Yeah, yeah.
I would, except I don't want to get in trouble with Mister Clerk because you have to have your board bills, so if you can, no, 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 I'm just saying, because we, the rules are you have to have them on that, uh, agenda, so I got up this morning and I, and did that.
I withdraw my request. Good point, Alderman.
I don't want to get in trouble with the clerk, okay?
Thanks.
All right, any, any other, any other bills, any other bills? All right, it's been moved by all ones from the first.
Second.
Uh, entertain a second on that motion.
Second.
Uh, is that the Alderman from the twelfth?
Yeah, it certainly is.
All right, the move by all ones from the first, second by all ones from, Alderman from the twelfth, that we spend the rules for the purposes of moving the aforementioned bills down to the perfection consent calendar. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Tyus.
Aye.
Alderwoman Middlebrook.
Aye.
Alderman Bosley. Alderwoman Evans.
Aye.
Alderman Page.
Aye.
Alderwoman Gracia.
Aye.
Alderman Calder.
Aye.
Alderwoman Rice.
Aye.
Alderman Gunther.
Aye.
Alderman Ballmer.
Aye.
Alderwoman Morton.
Aye.
Alderman Stevens.
Aye.
Alderwoman Switzer. Alderwoman Howard.
Aye.
Alderwoman Green.
Aye.
Alderman Oldenburg. Alderwoman Peel.
Aye.
Alderman Todd.
Aye.
Alderwoman Davis.
Aye.
Alderwoman Spencer.
Aye.
Alderman Collins Mohammed.
Start applying for jobs.
Alderman Boyd.
Aye.
Alderman Vaquero.
Aye.
Alderman Norrion.
Aye.
Alderman Cone.
Aye.
Alderwoman Clark Hubbard.
Aye.
Alderwoman Boyd.
Aye.
Alderwoman Navarro. President Reed.
Aye.
Alderman Bosley. Alderwoman Switzer. Alderman Oldenburg. Alderwoman Navarro. Twenty-five aye votes.
Our vote, we stand motion, all ones from the first. Uh, Madam Clerk, please place the aforementioned bills on the third reading consent calendar.
Um, perfection, isn't it?
Oh, excuse me.
Oh, you can move it there, that'll be even better.
I'm, I'm, I'm think, I'm thinking of.
Go ahead, I like that.
No, no, I'm thinking, I, I'm thinking ahead of, uh.
Okay, but I like yours, I like your motion better than mine.
Yeah, the perfection, perfection consent calendar. Anything further, anything further before we move forward? All right, uh, so, the other thing is, we're gonna call it, uh, I just want to let the people know who have bills that are still on here. Uh, we're gonna call it extra meeting next week to take up Board Bill two, but also the rest of these bills so that we can get all of this stuff off the agenda, uh, before, uh, we go on break, so we'll have a next meeting, first part of next week. After discussions with the, uh, with the vice chair. Dispense with line item fourteen, perfection consent calendar.
Board Bill twenty-eight sponsored by Alderwoman Davis and the following all the persons. Evans, Todd, Calder, Cone, and Gracia, Norrion, Collins Mohammed, Clark Hubbard, Morton, Howard, Gunther, Pam Boyd, Paige, Navarro, Peel, and Jeffrey Boyd. An ordinance establishing and creating the planned unit development district for city blocks eighteen sixty-eight, eighteen eighty, to be known as Veterans Community Project Planned Unit Development District and containing severability clause and an emergency clause. Board Bill forty-three sponsored by Alderman Page and ordinance approving a blighting study and redevelopment plan for fourteen twenty-eight Warren Street and twenty-five fourteen Blair Avenue redevelopment area. Board Bill fifty-two sponsored by Alderwoman Spencer and ordinance approving a redevelopment plan dated May twenty-fifth twenty twenty-one for the thirty-eight thirty-four Virginia Avenue area. Board Bill sixty sponsored by Alderwoman Evans and ordinance approving a redevelopment plan dated May twenty-fifth twenty twenty-one for the thirty-eight thirteen thirty-eight fifty-three Garfield area. Board Bill fifty-six sponsored by Alderwoman Middlebrook and ordinance recommended by the Board of Public Service to conditionally vacate above surface, surface and subsurface rights for vehicle equestrian and pedestrian travel in the easternmost of the foot, twen- twenty-foot wide east-west alley in city block four two three three as bounded by Forte Thatcher East Railroad and Antelope in the City of St. Louis, Missouri as herein after describing accordance with the Charter Authority and in conformity with section one four of Article twenty-one of the Charter and imposing certain conditions on such vacation. Board Bill thirty-two sponsored by Alderwoman Navarro and the following all the persons. Howard, Switzer, Stevens, Rice, Green, Gunther, Peel, Todd, Cone, Paige, Spencer, Morton, Norrion, and Gracia, and Clark Hubbard. An ordinance recommended by the Board of Estment and Apportionment, authorizing the Director of the Department of Human Services on behalf of the City of St. Louis to accept a grant award from Ford and Oregon Nonprofit Corporation in the amount of sixty thousand for the purposes of funding transportation services to two senior sen, senior centers to provide home-delivered meals for senior citizens in the City of St. Louis utilizing electric vehicles containing emergency clause. Board Bill seventy-four sponsored by Alderwoman Tyus and ordinance directing the Director of Streets to permanently close barricade or otherwise impede the flow of traffic at Lexington at the Eastern Curb Line of Kingsway, Kings Highway, Memorial Boulevard and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill seventy-five sponsored by Alderwoman Tyus and ordinance repealing ordinance number six eight four five five authorizing the Director of Streets to par, to open the permanently closed San Francisco Avenue three hundred and eighty-seven feet east of the Eastern Curb Line of Kings Highway, Memorial Boulevard and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill seventy-six Committee sub sponsored by Alderwoman Tyus and Alderman Bosley and ordinance directing the Director of Streets to permanently close barricade or otherwise impede the floor traffic at Ashland at the Western Curb Line of Marcus and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill eighty sponsored by Alderwoman Tyus and ordinance directing the, the Director of Streets to permanently close barricade or otherwise impede the floor traffic at Greer Avenue three hundred and seventy-five feet east of the East Curb Line of Union Boulevard and containing an emergency clause. That is the extension of perfection consent calendar.
Alderman from the tenth, you recognize on the motion for the perfection consent calendar.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board, I move that we adopt the perfection consent calendar.
Move by all and from the tenth, entertain a second on that.
Done, second.
Second by all ones from the fourteenth, in discussion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Oppose, motion carries. Board bills for perfection.
We have none.
Third reading and consent.
Board Bill twenty as amended.
Where are all the, all the women's from the first? Where are all of her bills? All right, all, all, all along from the, from the eighth, you have, uh, something on.
I do, um, Mr. President, could we move Board Bill twenty as amended to the regular calendar just for discussion since this impacts us all?
Uh, yes.
Thank you.
Madam, Madam Clerk, please make note of that, place Board Bill number twenty as amended on the regular third reading calendar.
So noted.
Third reading consent.
We have none.
All right, third reading report of engrossments.
Board Bill twenty as amended sponsored by President Reed and Alderman Collins Mohammed and ordinance repealing ordinance seven one zero two five concerning the establishment of policy for the disclosure of potential conflicts of interest and substantial personal interests and the reporting of certain personal financial interests as required under section one zero five point four eight three revised statutes of Missouri and in lieu thereof enacting a new ordinance reestablishing and affirming said policies as required under section one zero five point four eight three and containing an emergency clause.
Thank you, uh, Alderman from the twenty-first, you recognize on third reading final passage of Board Bill number twenty as amended.
They sue, uh, go to terms.
Thank you, Mr. President, uh, I move for the final passage of Board Bill number twenty as amended.
Move from the twenty-first and second from the fourteen.
So what I don't want you all to do of this work with.
Somebody has their mic on, could, could, STR could take care of that. Um, all the, all the ones from the eighth.
Thank you, Mr. President, um, I, and I apologize, uh, to the Alderman from the twenty-first for the late notice on pulling this off to the regular calendar. I just, this looks like a significant bill for transparency for the Board of Aldermen, and so I thought it would be good just to hearing your words, what exactly we're changing here and how this will affect our operations and our transparency to the public. Um, so if the Alderman from the twenty-first would yield or just respond, either way.
All right, I will, uh, ask him to, I'll see if he'll yield, but it really, it doesn't change anything, it's the, it's the language we take up every, Alderman from the twenty-first.
Thank you, uh, Mr. President. Uh, Alderwoman Rice, this board bill does not change anything, this is an annual board bill that we do to be in compliance with state law under the Missouri Ethics Commission and legislation passed by the, uh, state legislator. Uh, so this doesn't change it, this does not change anything. This solidifies what we've already passed and solidifies our, our promise to stay in compliance with, 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 with federal law and regulation.
Okay, wonderful, thank you for that. I think there was some confusion because I know we've had discussion around um, changing some of our ethics and reporting, so, um, I had gotten some questions from folks about whether this did change anything, so I, I appreciate the brief discussion, Alderman.
Thank you.
No problem, Alderwoman Rice, and I also tell you this, Kansas City actually models their legislation after ours here in the City of St. Louis as it relates to this, uh, con, conflict of interest, uh, in ethics, uh, legislation.
Thank you.
All the ones from the first.
Mr. President, members of the board, I'd also just add that by us doing this, we, uh, do not have to do certain ethics disclosures because we have our own. So that is also part of the ethics, uh, rule that if you, we do not have our own, then we have to go through a different procedure, but since we have our own, then we avoid that additional compliance through the Ethics Commission.
Exactly right, thank you all of them. Any further discussion, any further discussion? It's been moved by all and from the twenty-first that we third read and final pass, Board Bill number twenty as amended, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Tyus.
Aye.
Alderwoman Middlebrook.
Aye.
Alderman Bosley.
Aye. Aye.
Alderwoman Evans.
Aye.
Alderman Page.
Aye.
Alderwoman and Gracia.
Aye.
Alderman Calder.
Aye.
Alderwoman Rice.
Aye.
Alderman Gunther.
Aye.
Alderman Ballmer.
Aye.
Alderwoman Morton.
Aye.
Aldo, Alderman Stevens.
Aye.
Alderwoman Switzer.
Aye.
Alderwoman Howard.
Aye.
Aye.
Alderwoman Green.
Aye.
Alderman Oldenburg. Alderwoman Peel.
Aye.
Alderman Todd.
Aye.
Alderwoman Davis.
Aye.
Alderwoman Spencer.
Aye.
Alderman Collins Mohammed.
Aye.
Alderman Boyd.
Aye.
Alderman Vaquero.
Aye.
Alderman Norrion.
Aye.
Alderman Cone.
Aye.
Alderwoman Clark Hubbard.
Aye.
Alderwoman Boyd.
Aye.
Alderwoman Navarro. President Reed.
Aye.
Alderman Oldenburg. Alderwoman Navarro. Twenty-seven aye votes.
My vote, staying the motion, Alderman from the twenty-first and third read and final pass the aforementioned bill. Report of enrollment.
Board Bill twenty as amended.
All other business being suspended, the president shall in open session affix his signature heretofu to the end that these may become law. All other business being suspended, the president shall an open session fix his signature hereto to the end that these may become law. First reading resolutions.
Resolution fifty seven sponsored by Alderwoman and Gracia. Authorizing the provisions of a project exemption certificate in connection with the plan for an industrial development project for daily store cooperation.
All the women, all the one from the sixth, you recognize on the first reading of resolution fifty seven.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that we send resolution fifty seven to the HUD's committee.
It's been moved by all one from the sixth, entertain second on that motion.
Second.
Second about all one from the thirteenth that we send resolution fifty seven to HUD's in discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, motion carries. Madam Clerk, please make note of that, sign resolution fifty seven.
Oh, noted.
Second reading.
We have none.
Miss Linus and unfinished business.
We have none.
Announcements.
Wednesday, July fourteenth, twenty twenty one. Quarks will have a meeting at nine AM via webinar Thursday, July fifteenth, twenty twenty one. Public Safety will have a meeting at nine AM via webinar. Friday, July sixteenth, full board meeting, ten AM via webinar. That is the extent of the announcement.
All the ones from the first.
Mr. President and members of the boards, Streets will have a meeting at eleven AM on Wednesday, July eleventh.
Madam Clerk, please make note of that Streets Wednesday, July eleventh. At eleven.
Fourteen.
Excuse.
Fourteen.
Fourteenth. At eleven. Get that madam clerk.
So noted.
Any further announcements, any further announcements? Alderman from the tenth, you recognize on the motion to excuse.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I move to excuse the Alderman from the sixteenth and the twenty eighth wards for necessary absence.
It's been moved by Alderman from the from the tenth, entertain a second on that motion.
Second. There was no second. I didn't hear it.
I know. I know you were, I know you were hoping for that. I was, I was going to make several calls on that.
I didn't hear a second. Since you can't hear the no's, we can't hear that second.
Yeah, yeah, it's been moved by home for to say it by all. From the fourteenth, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose.
No.
My mic must have went out. I didn't hear any no's. Motion carries. All from tenth, you recognize on the motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I move that we adjourned it Tuesday morning, July thirteenth at ten AM.
It's been moved.
What? I can't. Wait, what? No.
It's been second, been moved by all, all from the tenth, second by all one from the fourteenth. Madam Clerk, you can't vote, so you be here Tuesday. It's been moved, second it. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Excuse me, can we have some?
Hold on a second, all one from, all one from the first.
So we're going to have a meeting before the last meeting?
Ah, yes, but all.
Then I need to move Streets up. The reason why I was having Streets is I thought we were going to have it afterwards so that I could get the people's bills moved. I thought that's what we were doing.
I would like to move Public Safety up for the same reason. Well, you can, we still going to have a final, we'll still have a meeting Friday, but.
But it won't be able on time to get those, the calendar gets messed up that way. I'm joking aside.
Well, talk to, talk to, talk to the clerk when we wrap up and get them scheduled. The quicker we get out of this meeting, quicker you can get with the clerk and get everything scheduled.
So so we, I thought we were going to have, I just understand, so we're not going to have a meeting after the Friday meeting. We're going to have a meeting before the Friday meeting, so we got to schedule our meetings for Monday.
Yes, we're going to meet, we're going to meet before the Friday meeting. Yes, so if you can talk with the clerk and the clerk will get everything worked out. Alderman from the twenty fifth and all one, just just as a note, all one from the first. You know that that motion to adjourn is a non debatable emotion, so.
No, but I thought the announcement was about.
I know, I know, I know.
I'm sorry, I thought there was another announcement about when we were going to meet. Oh, a motion to adjourn to that date. Okay. All right, I'm sorry. Threw me off because I was looking for the meeting to be announced after this. I'm sorry, I just don't want to mess up. There are some people trying to get their board bills through.
Yeah, I know, I know. That's why I recognize you, that's.
Man, I just, I thought you made a mistake.
No, 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 no. Alderman from the twenty fifth, do you have something relevant or?
Yeah, I was actually just asking, like, is it possible to move the special session to that Thursday so people can fit in?
No, we cannot move it to that Thursday because we have to have E and A in between. So we can't. We have to have time for E and A.
Okay.
Yeah, we can't move to that.
Okay.
All right, all right, thank you. It's been moved and seconded. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose.
No.
See you Tuesday.
Not me.
See you next Tuesday.
Right, see y'all.